In case you're wondering, we cannot start early, no matter what. It's against the law, actually, state law. We can start late, we just can't start early. Before we start, though, we would mention that we encourage everyone to either wear a mask or socially distance in order to meet the recommended guidelines for public gatherings. 6:30. Good evening and welcome here to the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We note that we have a full quorum participating. As happens now in our society with the issues going on, we have both in-person and electronic options for participating and attending our council meetings. So we have a council member online with us, and at various times, we've all done that. And the public as well can do the same. They are able to go online on YouTube and watch. And if they desire to participate electronically, they can notify us and we can give them the information to participate and we bring them in electronically. With that information, then, we will begin tonight, as we do generally, by an Inside the City video that has some feature of West Valley to share.
National Night Out 2021 has gone awesome this year. It's been a fantastic year for the neighborhoods and for the community. We've had roughly about 30 neighborhood block parties, which is down, but it was a rebuild year after last year because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We had two safety fairs, one geared towards families and one geared towards seniors at the Family Fitness Center earlier this month. And tonight, we're doing our National Night Out wrap-up celebration, community festival, hero celebration, you name it. It's just a fun night here at Fairborn Station Promenade.
One of the wonderful things about an event like this is that we make sure we have officers from across the department that participate in these events. So that when people come, they get to learn about the different things that the police department that we do.
National Night Out is pretty important for the community just because it helps build relationships within the neighborhoods. That's why we really emphasize neighborhood block parties at a neighborhood level. But because we know all neighborhoods can't do the block parties, we also encourage the residents to come out to some of these safety fairs and larger community events so they can get really important information from all of our community partners. Also, you know, meet our police officers, meet our fire department, meet our community services, get information from our partners about things that are really important for them, about health and safety.
National Night Out is all about crime prevention, and really, it's about bringing out your neighborhood to get to learn your neighbors. Police Department is an important part in reducing crime in neighborhoods, but it's not the only part, probably not the most important part. The most important part is neighbors knowing each other and working together to make sure that when they see something that's out of the ordinary, they're not only talking to each other, but they're communicating with law enforcement. So we try to bring everybody together in an event like this to thank them for partnering with the police department and also to help them get to know each other. And so it's great to see everybody out and celebrating today.
Thank you. Actually, West Valley City has been recognized nationally for many years for the successful National Night Out that they hold. So, and of course, this one about the police department, very critical for citizens to be involved and assist our police in many aspects of crime prevention and follow-up. Let's see, with that, then, we have quite a few people here tonight. That's good. Wish that were every night. Let's see, we're on our agenda. Next is the approval of our minutes of August 24.
I move for approval of those minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, property before us, hearing no further comments. Then without objection, our minutes will be approved. And there were no objections, so that's unanimous. Next, we have our public comment period. Many people have signed up to speak. We would mention to you several items for those of you who will be participating in this. One, all of your comments will be directed to me as the mayor representing the city. It is not question and answer time. It is not debate time. It is your time. You take your time. It's yours to speak whatever issue that you want. We ask you to be respectful and to utilize that a maximum of five minutes, although many people take less. And we set aside a total of 30 minutes during our meeting for public comment. And I guess I need to check with the council. I suspect there are some people here for the item that was continued, our unfinished business. What's that?
You all have a couple of public hearings.
Yes. Our public, if you're here for a specifically scheduled public comment hearing, you will note there, too, the issuance of the road revenue bonds and the application on property at 3540 West, 4700 South. Those actually have a separate public hearing. That one is limited to only that issue. Our general comments that we're doing now is open to anything. We did all, we have some unfinished business. We held a public hearing at our last meeting on the issue on the property on 40th West. And so unless the council so directs, we've had our public comment there. And I will not reopen that unless the council directs me to. So, so if you're here for that issue, the only other time you have is the public comments. So with that general information, we will invite those who have signed up to speak. If you're speaking to one of those other two, the 4700 South or the revenue road bonds, just kind of wave and we'll skip you and call on you when it's time for those. Okay, we have first to begin with Sarah Hetzer. Okay.
Hi there. I, I'm from Wending Lane. I spoke last week regarding lawns and watering and getting fine for the lawns. I just wanted to bring up one more thing is I honestly, I don't feel like the city's doing enough to make an effort in this water conservation. I noticed a lot of city property has quite a bit of grass and it's been watered pretty regularly. And I don't see any difference from when there wasn't a drought. So I would, I would encourage that the council does, makes more of an effort to try and conserve more water. And from that, that's all I really have to say, and I would appreciate your efforts in that. I don't think that just posting online what the water restrictions are is enough. I think we should be making more of an effort. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Adam. Mayor. Oh, I can't quite make that out.
Yes.
If there's an Adam, I'm probably getting your last name wrong.
But I'm on the first issue, correct?
You're on the revenue bonds?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I'm here for the issue on 4700 South.
Okay, then, we'll come back to you. Roger Arroyo Franco.
He is well.
Same thing. William Ryan.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Thank you.
Robert and Anna Beasley.
Same thing.
Okay, that's why we have so many here. That's great. Brian Pitcher.
Yes, good to see you guys all again today. I was here, was it, what, two weeks ago when it got postponed? So I guess I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is, thank you for, I guess, throwing the idea out there and seeing if it will go or not. What I wanted to let you know is that I just bought this property and it's a triplex, 12 storage units and 12 mobile homes. And when I buy properties, and I own quite a few, I like to improve them. I like to do everything I can to make them better, make them better for the community, make them better for values, which in turn increases taxes. And right now, my hands are kind of tied. Like, I can't really do much with it because all of my current uses right now are not in actual zoning for what this property is. And so that's why I proposed something that would work, which was the storage unit complex. And I've also heard some, some ideas that people don't like the, the climate-controlled building that's in the back, that that can be changed. But I don't really see another use with the current property that I could actually do that makes sense. And so if, if the council doesn't approve, then I'm, I'm just going to be stuck with leaving it the way it is because I can't really do anything without a zone change as far as improving the property. So yeah, my hands are tied. So I appreciate you taking a second look at it, maybe going over to see what, what you can do there. I'm trying to improve the area, improve. And I guess it's a split on the neighbors, on what they like, what they don't like. And a lot of people don't like the big building. I understand that. I can readdress that portion if that's what it takes. I just want to be able to improve my property. I don't have any plans on selling anytime in the near future. It's a long-term play for me, and I would like to better the area and better the community. Thank you much.
Thank you. Clint Weber.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I've been back here before, too, but I just wanted to reiterate with you that I'm all in favor of this property development. I live at 4264 South and 4270 South. And the thing about it is, when I look at the property, I just don't see what, what other possible use could be out of it. I, I hope that everybody has looked at the property and seen what's available, what is not there. But it's, it's an awful, awful, tough, tough time to be in the, in the property game like that. I mean, I don't see that there's anything else that could be done from it. But, you know, I, I'm just here to address that part of it. And I, but I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Daryl Curtis.
Good evening, Mayor. With that property on 40th West, decisions that are made at the council today affect this, that area for, for hundreds of years, if not longer, because of the permanence of things that happen. So any decision that is made, if this isn't the best decision for that area, where I know it's a U-shaped lot, then, then, then by doing it now, then you're making it a permanent situation long-term. And I've seen some storage units where things are done in storage units that are, they do auto repair shops in there. They, some, they've had live-in storage units. And if there's no gate, no control over getting in and out, then you're opening it up to more of a situation like that. I just want to make sure that any decision that is made today, it is recognized that it will be a permanent fixture. Thank you.
Jim Viesok.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to bring up code enforcement. Mike Markham, two weeks ago, spoke very eloquently about it and the lack thereof what appears to be enforcing out there. I don't see him out there. I see the same problems over and over and over again. The lawn issue, I know you guys have put it out to study for the people. Didn't come to the study meeting, they are looking into that. There, there's, there's got to be something done. You know, the governor keeps saying, reduce water, reduce water. You can reduce water and still have a halfway decent-looking yard. It doesn't have to look bad. But our ordinances have to be set that allow people to do that without being in fear of getting a ticket, be inside and getting a courtesy notice or whatever. So hopefully, this moves along pretty quick and it gets resolved because in a month here, we'll go into the moratorium and then it'll be all the way to next May. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Next is Scherzinger.
Thank you, Mayor Bigelow, for this opportunity to speak about the land that wants to be developed on 40th West. I am so sorry that the previous owners did not, in all my 40 years, even bother to put a light back there, gate or anything. So now we are here to try to remedy that situation. However, the fellow that spoke about the big building is, is correct. We don't want that big building in my backyard. That building will take up everything in my backyard up to the property line. You can look at that building. That building will look right into my living room, right into my kitchen. We'll never be able to have any kind of a family gathering back there. Weddings are out. My, that, the back of that building will face the back of my house. Now, you might not think that's much, but I still don't know how tall it is going to be. And so I keep having these crazy nightmares. And the other night, I had one, and it, we had some people that moved back in there and they started bringing in all sorts of trash and everything. Anyway, I never really noticed because, you know, in my life, I don't sit and gander around everywhere. It has nothing to do with me. But I saw this woman climbing up on this tall, and it looked like a piece of junk. Well, that's what it was. It was a truck that they had brought in all kinds of stuff. So I got to thinking, you know, that's what's going to happen with this building. They're going to start putting a ladder up there, jumping in my backyard. And, and, because there's not going to be a fence. I was told that the back of that building is going to be the fence. And it just does not make any sense to me, for me. A fellow that just spoke said, the traffic, that's a, that's a major project right there, the traffic. Last week, somebody said, and I'm not going to say who said it, but they said, the traffic will take care of itself. Really, you think? I don't think so. I've noticed a lot of things. School buses coming and going now. I never did go back over to the property. However, my husband did call. There's been more trash put back there, cars, and that's always been there. However, I think that storage sheds is not the answer to this problem. I don't. I have been all over Salt Lake since the last meeting, and I've made notes about storage sheds and where they're at. But, you know, I have really never found any in a residential setting. They, like that fellow said, I have watched everything under the sun in that back with, with the 11 or 9 or 11, whatever, storage sheds back there. And I agree, there has to be something done. But you know what? That's residential area. You go up and down that street, all there is is residential homes, all kinds of apartments. And I understand the fact that they say, well, some of those trailers. Well, that's because it wasn't kept up and somebody fell short of enforcing that. And, and I felt so sorry for Mr. Weber, having all those homeless people living in his backyard. That's something else. There's homeless people living over there. So I understand that there needs to be something done, but it has to be different than, than tearing everything down and then building it up again. That's all that's going to happen. And that building, big building back there, it's going to be a magnet, a magnet for, for things you don't want to happen back there. And I'm afraid that it's going to become one of West Valley's worst nightmares when that area goes up. I cannot see anything else. What was, what was a home, a house, a neighborhood, friends, families, churches, whatever? There's a church and schools and everything up on that, all over 40th West. So please, please, remember the people that are going to live there because you guys aren't going to live there. Sorry. I've lived there 40 years, so I know.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, by the way, I should mention that if any of you want to speak in these other public hearings and you've spoken here, that's okay, too. This one is very limited. Is there anyone, that completes the people we had on here for public comment? Is there anyone else who wanted to comment on this? We still have a few minutes left. Not seen anyone? Then we'll close the public comment period, come back. Our Assistant City Manager, any comments?
No, not today. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Then to the council. Well, I'll add a couple of them. Just so that you're aware, one person talked about the watering issue. The council is going to take a look at that in depth, study that issue, get information. If you want to hear a little more about it, listen to the meeting online when we had our study meeting earlier. There was also a mention about the long-term impact. That is true of every decision we make or don't make. The city council cannot direct someone to build the certain thing on their property. We can do general zoning and say, this is an area for homes. This one is for commercial, this one is for manufacturing. But we do not own the property. We can only direct those general areas. So, and every decision we make when it comes to those typically has long-term impact. In other words, if we approve a zoning change, that has a long-term impact. If we don't approve a zoning change, that has a long-term impact. It's just the nature of it. But we are not allowed to force a proper owner to change what they want to build as long as it meets the requirements and their general requirements put up for everyone to know. If they request a change, the only thing we can do is either approve that or not. So it's kind of interesting. So sometimes people think we have more power than we actually do. And it's actually a good thing that we can't do everything. We still want people to have the freedom to utilize their properties as long as it falls within certain guidelines that doesn't impact other people. So with that, with that, we'll go on to our agenda if there are no other comments. And we will go down our agenda. So first, first of all, we have on here a public hearing for public comment to consider the issuance of road revenue bonds. And this is a requirement that we have this in place. We have discussed this before, but it is a requirement that we hold a public hearing and allow anyone from the public to come and comment on the city issuing these bonds. These bonds are related to roads, as obvious from the title of that. It is something we have done before. It's fairly routine concept. Fortunately, we don't do it all the time, but when needed, why we do. So rather than to go into detail on those bonds, we're here to discuss the generalities of it and allow people to comment on that. Does anyone else on the council want to add anything to that before I open the public comment period? Not hearing any? Then I will open it to comments from the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue of the road revenue bonds? Not seeing any, and we have no one online? Okay. Then with that, sometimes our issues are routine and don't get a lot of comment. With that, I'll close the public comment hearing portion of it and bring it back to the council for their comment or action. Or let's see, I guess we don't have action on it. We've actually completed that. My habit is always to bring it back and open it for action. But since there's no further, any final comments from the council? Or our Assistant City Manager, anything? Okay. Then with that, that completes that item on our agenda. Next, we go to another public hearing that we are going to hold, Application GPZ-10-21, 2021. This is filed by Adam Mailer. It's a change of land use, a zoning change, and a development agreement on property at 3540 West, 4700 South. It's for, let's see, for just over an acre parcel of ground. And it's proposed to be changed from medium-density residential and from residential business to a project for a 14-unit, two-story townhome development. A density of, well, with the 14 units, about 11 units per acre average. Two-car garage, driveway big enough for two more parking spots. The units will range from seven, over 1,700 square feet to over 2,100 square feet. All units would have a basement, decks off second floor. That is the introduction to it. Anything the council would like to add before we open the public comment period? Not seeing anything, then, we will open. Not seeing anything, then we will open it to the public. I know we have at least four people here to speak to this because they were signed up. We will open this comment period. This one is a little different. There is not time limits on it. Although we do encourage you to be concise, this one can go longer. With that, then, we will go to Adam Mailer, who was the next mayor. Sign up. If I got your name wrong, please correct that.
Everybody gets my name wrong, Mayor. Don't worry about it. It's Adam Maher.
Maher, okay, thank you.
It's a pleasure to be with you tonight, so I am the designated agent for the owner, Mr. Rogelio Franco, who's with us here tonight. We've worked very closely with the city in putting this together, and I guess your paperwork, Mayor, is still showing fourteen units, which we'd be more than happy with, but our current application's for twelve. If you propose fourteen, we'll accept that right now.
I'm sorry, it does say here has reduced the proposed number of units to twelve. That's why the eleven point one works.
I just was feeling pretty lucky and thought we'd leave it at that, so, but anyways, no, I would just like-
What's in writing always wins. What's in writing always wins.
No, what the mayor says wins, from what I understand, but we've worked very closely with staff, so we originally, our owner has owned the land for a time and pursued a couple of different uses. There wasn't really the rental base for any of the kind of office-type use. He pursued a couple of different leads with that, and with the cost of development right now, an office just didn't make much sense. But we all know what housing is happening, was going on right now in the city, so Mr. Franco owns a number of different apartment buildings, and I guess it's worth mentioning, I myself, my storage business has been located in West Valley City for the last sixteen years, so I'm a business owner here in West Valley as well. And so we put together a residential plan, worked very closely with the city, talked to a number of different realtors. As I said, Mr. Franco owns some apartment buildings, and he worked very closely with his tenants, some of which you chose to come tonight to say, okay, what product makes sense? What's the kind of layout that people like? And we put together this plan. With the zoning, we were hoping to get closer to the twenty units to the acre. Staff then urged us lower. We then did a sixteen units to the acre. Staff urged us lower. Then we have fourteen units to the acre. Staff urged us lower. And currently, we have a plan for twelve units to the acre, which then staff also during the development, the development agreement encouraged basements. So we also made the units bigger. So we worked closely with your staff and obviously went through your planning commission process, making it, we thought, the best project that it could be for the land, for the cost, for the area, and for what a lot of the citizens of West Valley are looking for, to not always be renters, but to be owners and to make a long-term play. So with that, we feel good about the plan that we've put together, and we've done everything we can to be responsive to staff at every step along the way. And be happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Does Mr. Franco want to speak as well?
Thank you for this opportunity to have me here. I didn't know that I can speak to these wonderful persons here, otherwise I can prepare a good speech and resource. So in my entire life, I have understood why support to big developers and big buildings is universal in any place. Opportunity is not for small developers. That opportunity is denied for all those who wants to create a better place with better opportunities. The places that I'm created provides a place, but not just a place, a home for all those who has been denied that opportunity because of the prices, because whatever situation. That is causing that the sum of the cities is losing great citizens who are looking for that opportunity to another places, another cities, or even another countries. I would like to ask everybody here just to ponder that opportunity, because prices is still growing up and a lot of families is still renting, is still not getting that opportunity to create better citizens to the place. So is what I want to say, and thank you for this opportunity. And thank you for having me here.
Thank you. William Bryan?
Sorry, a little slow. Devil need replacement surgery, slows you right down.
That's fine. There's no problem. You take the time you need. Just be safe.
I'm here in support of gentleman and his project. I've been renting a place from him now since I lost my wife to Mercer a few years back. Had to sell a five-bedroom house in West Jordan and two cars to pay most of her bills off. I have it down to a hundred dollars, I can safely say, I'm proud to say. I look forward to this. I work for Motorsports Land. They have a new lot on fifty-six hundred west, I'm sure you guys are aware of. Right now, I commute from Taylorsville. I have a son-in-law and a daughter who live in West Valley on Adams, and I like the area and I like what it represents. I'm from Southern California. Been here for a number of years. I like that this is gonna be affordable for a person like myself with my income. And I know the quality of how this guy takes care of things. I've been with him for a few years. And he's here to help. And I know that you people are all here to make the city better. I understand. I just hope you will take in consideration, let this move forward, because I'm looking forward to purchasing one of those. And I need a little more than one bedroom. I have a son going to University of Maryland. He comes home every so often. He's an intern for the CIA developing anti-terrorism equipment. He can never tell me what he's doing, but he said it's fun. But anyway, this, this location is like I can go to fifty-six hundred west and go right to work. You know, so I hope you will consider and allow this to happen, and I thank all of you for your time.
Thank you. Then the bees, please.
My wife's gonna sit with the children.
Robert.
I'm Robert. It's nice to meet you guys. I'm also here in support of this project. We also have rented from Mr. Franco for many years. We moved into a two-bedroom apartment that he rented to us. We've been there for about five years right now, when our son was newborn. It was plenty of space. It just isn't anymore. Since then, we've been working on our credit, building everything up, so we're able to build, to buy a house. Right now, you guys know the market. It's just not possible for a regular family. I've worked for the same company. I don't know if you guys are familiar. They've been in the valley since nineteen thirty-eight. I wasn't born in West Valley, but I was raised in West Valley. My kids were born and raised in West Valley. We don't wanna leave, the cost of housing is just, it's something that was two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars ago, three years ago, that we were planning on buying, is over five-hundred-thousand dollars now. We working a regular job, working, trying to get our bills paid, trying to get our credit on track and get ourselves into a position where we can afford these opportunities. We don't have twenty percent to put down on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house. But we're looking out with this property with Mr. Franco is reserving one of the units, putting the deposits down, reserving that because it is the space we need. Our kids won't have to change their schools where they've gone to school with the same, their same friends their whole life. I don't really know what else to say to that. I heard from, from my understanding from the beginning, when I first talked to him about putting down a reservation, deposits or anything like that, I haven't had to yet, but putting down the reservation, it was my understanding that the permits, everything were square and everything was was on track. I don't know what happened. We don't wanna leave West Valley. I don't want my kids to have to change schools and lose the friends, my daughter especially, the friends she's made her whole life. She's in junior high now. This is an opportunity for us in this market, the way it is, to do better for us, to be able to give my son his own bedroom and get the space that we need. We're not asking that you guys give us a five, six-bedroom house with the giant property. This is such a small piece of land for something that could be so affordable for so many families like ours. I wonder if anybody has any questions for me? Right. I just wanted to put that in there and let you know I'm in full support because it is something that is possible for us to be able to move up in our life.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this issue? Not seeing anyone? Then, oh. One more.
Okay, I, this will be right in my backyard if this happens. And I told my husband, I didn't think it was gonna do us much good to come to this meeting tonight because we don't seem to be heard on things. I definitely do not want this happening in my backyard. It's a nuisance what's going on right now. I have, my backyard is right there to this vacant property, and there are cars, trucks and big semis coming in there till eleven o'clock and past at nights with their lights shining right in my windows. All these cars coming, I don't know what they do at that hour of the night or what they're doing there. But I don't like it. We've got the credit union next door. We've got all this traffic. We're right there on, there's an intersection on Thirty-Sixth West and Forty-Seventh South. Since we have lived there for about thirteen years now, I cannot believe the accidents from the traffic there. There is constantly an accident right there on that intersection all the time. Two days in a row, I saw accidents happen at that spot. And I don't want it there. If it's too much traffic, I don't wanna have, we've got enough problems going on in West Valley City as it is. So anyway, that's the way I feel about it, and a lot of my neighbors, I'm sure, I don't know why they don't show up and speak their piece. Maybe because like me, they feel like it doesn't do them any good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing? No one else? We'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Just wanna say to all of you who came tonight to speak, thank you. We appreciate your input. If we don't ask a lot of questions, understand that we have studied this before. We study all the items generally we have on our agenda the week prior to give us a chance to find out all the details and ponder it before we take a final vote. One of the challenges you mentioned on, didn't feel you were being heard, but one of the great challenges is that we hear oftentimes people on both sides of an issue. And if we vote for one, the other side said, you didn't hear us. But if we reverse it, they say the same. We do hear, but we try to vote in accordance with what we believe will be the best for West Valley City long term. That even varies among members of the council. So it just depends on what each individual feels is the best thing to do. Anyway, just thought I'd mention those two items. I guess I'm a little wordy tonight, so council puts up with me once in a while. So right now, it's in the council's possession to discuss or whatever they'd like to do. Councilman Bueller?
I have some questions of staff.
Yes, sir.
Does our development agreement include any price controls?
It does not. So this is Steve Pastrick. It does not include any price controls.
And my comment would be, I'm sure Mr. Franco is a great landlord, and I appreciate that. We want great landlords in the city, but what the price of these units of built will be is completely out of our control. It's not on our table at all. If we change the zoning and allow apartments to be built there or condominiums to be built there, there's no guarantee that Mr. Franco would build those. It's, it runs with the land, and if he decides he's not gonna do it, or if he's gonna sell it to some other developer, or anybody buys their condominium, has it built, and then sells it to somebody else, this is gonna be controlled by the market. This isn't going to reduce housing prices, in my opinion, in the city anywhere, including these twelve units. And now we have a thirty-five-square-mile city. Every inch of that is zoned. Every owner can build and develop and redevelop according to their zoning without coming to see the city council. They only need to come see the city council if they want to change the zone. And for me to change the zoning, it has to be something that's special. It has to be something that, boy, I'm glad you came. This looks like something that we don't have in the city, something that we need, something that's gonna be great. And yeah, let's change the zoning. Let's develop something special. And that's pretty much the extent of my comments at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, all of you came here tonight and share with us about you supporting and also you against this piece of property on forty-seven hundred west, forty-six, forty-seven hundred south, sorry. I heard you mention about opportunity and you look out for that. I think the same, the same thing that we hear at the council, we are looking for the opportunity for our city. And our decisions, we make our decisions based on a long time. It's not only for yesterday or today or tomorrow, but we're gonna do for maybe twenty-five years from now, fifty years from now, maybe a hundred years from now. And we want, we look out, the opportunity, we look out for our city, and we make our city better and and be nicer, the place for everyone can enjoy. To see the west of this piece of property, you see this credit union right there, and the west side, you see that strip mall across from the Thirty-Sixth hundred west. And I would like to see something that there connection with that commercial. It is the multiple options we can do for this piece of property. It's not really hurry to do something about density in this, this property. And that, in my opinion, I think is, you look out for you, about opportunity, and we look out for us, about our opportunity for our city. And I think we wanna share that with you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayan?
There you go.
The reason why I'm gonna vote, the way I'm voting on this is for the same reason I'm voting, the way I'm voting on the item that was continued prior, and that is in full acknowledgement of the fact that we don't have price controls over housing. We don't even have that much control over whether or not a landlord is gonna be a fantastic landlord, like Mr. Franco or not. When I talk to my neighbors, when I look at the pending priorities here in the city, I'm going to lean in favor of providing safe places for people to live with their families rather than storage units or commercial uses. So I'm gonna stay consistent with my vote later on tonight as well, in that same vein.
I'm not sure how long I wait to see if no action is taken. We could take no action. I don't think we have a motion before us in any way.
No, I was just waiting for any other comments. If not, I'm comfortable making a motion.
And you're willing to make a motion? What is your motion then?
Uh, the motion then would be to approve ordinance twenty one dash fifty three.
I'm sorry, for some reason I didn't hear what you said. To approve it.
Correct.
Okay. It. Yeah, with the masks, you have to speak right into the mic.
I got you, man. Sorry about that.
So the motion is that we have, uh, now let's see, that on. You're referring to ordinance twenty one dash fifty three?
Correct.
The motion is to approve that. Is there a second? Second. Okay, the motion is properly before us. Hearing no further comments. Then we'll go to our city recorder for the roll call vote as required by state law.
Councilman Fatis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
No.
Councilman Bueller?
No.
Councilman Hune?
No.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller? Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Our next item of business there is before us if anyone wants to make a motion.
I move for approval of ordinance twenty one dash fifty four. Second.
Property before us, no further comments, then to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
No.
Councilman Bueller?
Nay.
Councilwoman Fatis, Councilwoman Lang?
No.
Councilman Fatis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
Move for approval of resolution twenty one dash one sixty. Second.
Property before us, hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have authorized in the city to enter into an agreement with select health for health insurance. Uh, services for our city. This particular. One, uh, we currently have. An agreement, let's see. In place. This will continue that at essentially the same rates. Uh, the same coverage, what we've been doing, they've been with us for a number of years now. Uh, so this is nothing unusual. It's just renewing that. It's already in the budget, so there's no new budget. Uh, to go to it. It just is covered from our existing budget. With that introduction, this one is pretty straightforward to the council.
Move to approve resolution twenty one dash one sixty one. Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? And then to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fatis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next we have our consent agenda. These are items that are fairly routine involving low amounts of money. This is resolutions twenty one dash one sixty two and one sixty three. Same type of issue for both these pieces of property. We're doing a project on forty seven hundred south. Where we are doing, uh, some major roadwork along there. And there are a couple of things we need to have just a little bit more property. For it and as well, we need to be have access to people's property for the construction period. And so all of that involved is, uh, as we work on these, these are both actually properties. Their front is on another street, but, uh. On, uh. Their backyards are on forty seven hundred south, so we need to have this agreement. We've worked with them and they've agreed to it. So that's what these are. We typically take them as a group, but they can be done individually. So to the council.
Move for approval of the two items on the consent agenda. Second.
Properly before us, see no further comments to our city record.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fatis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next we go to our unfinished business held over from a previous council meeting, which has had a lot of discussion. Uh, this is application GPZ thirteen twenty twenty one filed by Brian Pitcher. Uh, there are three items that we will deal with one way or another. Ordinance twenty one dash fifty one. This is a general plan change. Uh, ordinance twenty one dash fifty two, a zoning change. And then resolution twenty one dash one fifty two. For the development agreement. Uh, this has been discussed. I don't know that I need to introduce much more on this. Although it has been a great discussion, especially on the issue of our making decisions. Our decisions are limited to what is in writing before us. In other words, even if we say something wrong, which I do occasionally. What is in writing trumps that. It's a, the, uh, the document that we approve is the specifics of that. And that is the only thing that we approve. In this case. We can either approve these changes or not. If it's a zoning change, we have the authority and our staff assist us on this. To place certain requirements on some of the construction. But that is somewhat limited. If it's no zoning change and they build according to the statutes. Then we can't do any more than that. If they meet the requirements. They meet them. They can build. In this case, there is a zoning change requested. So we are placing some requirements through the development agreement on it. This is on, this is the fortieth west one. So, uh, we've had some discussion, uh, just for the information of people here. Two weeks ago, when we held our last meeting, there was a tie vote. A tie vote means it doesn't pass. That's why we have an odd number of counselors. Uh, council members. And so we have all seven participating tonight, so it can't tie. But then any motion is in order. So it's back in the council's possession. We can discuss it more, do whatever you would like, council.
I'd like to make a couple of comments, Mayor, if that's okay.
That's in order.
Um, I heard the discussion last week, uh, for quite a while before I had to leave. I was called out to another meeting. I apologize for that. I'm almost always here and I never try to leave early. But a couple of things that were said that concerned me was that. Hey, you know, this property isn't very nice. Well. That may be. But we didn't cause it to be that way. Every owner of every property can maintain and can improve that property. As it is, that it's twelve storage units now and twelve mobile homes. Well, it could be the nicest twelve storage units and twelve mobile homes in the country. If that were the commitment of the owner. Again, to change the zoning, it has to be for me something special. It has to be something that we are happy to see come into the city. Not just something that maybe is incrementally better than what's there now, because this is a long term decision. And just, you know, if we don't, if we pass this and this is built, that's it for the next fifty, sixty, seventy years. If we don't pass it. We don't know what some other buyer, some other other developer. Uh, another property owner would want to do there what their vision might be, and it might then just be something that's special that we would change the zoning for. So I thought I'm going to move for denial of ordinance twenty one dash fifty one.
Second.
Pick one of those for the second and. Properly before us, any further discussion?
I'd, I'd like to add a comment, um. Mr. Bueller has. Convinced me that, uh. That we should be looking for more from this property. And I know, Mr. Pitcher, that this is a challenging. Property and that, uh, you're in a tough spot. There's not much we can do about it, but I, but I. I have faith in you to, that you can make some improvements with. With the parameters that have been set and that, that you can improve that property and. And make it something that's, that will be, that will be better and in the future, it can be even something really great. So hopefully you can do that and we can work with you to, to make that happen.
Interesting. I go back to the issue that we can either approve or deny, but that's all we can do. And so, uh, if this passes, we can certainly encourage. But, uh, that does not require anything.
That's right.
Uh, of the owner.
And I think the key to this.
Maybe make some enticements at some point, but, uh, our issue is we either approve it or we don't.
I'm sorry.
It may or may not happen. Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure. I keep thinking you're done and then you're not, but, uh, I think the key to this property is the garage. And as, of course, the garage isn't owned by this owner, but, uh, maybe. The owners of the garage will want to buy the surrounding property, or maybe this owner will buy the garage. I'd hate to see the garage go. I get my cars fixed there sometimes. And, uh, I, I enjoy the mechanics that work there and do this, but I just don't see this as something that we want to do. That I want to do and would be proud of when I drive up and down that road.
Any further comments? To our city recorder?
Councilman Fatis Manu?
To clarify, the motion was for denial.
That's correct.
So to support the denial, you vote yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
No.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
That's done?
Move for denial of ordinance twenty one dash fifty two. Second.
Property before us to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fatis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for denial passes by unanimously.
Okay.
I move for approval of resi-, uh, no, I mean for denial of resolution twenty one dash one fifty two.
Second.
With that, then I think we're on a roll to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
That completes our agenda. There's no need for a closed session. Uh, our work is completed. We thank all of you who stayed to. Uh, see this through. Uh, we always appreciate it when people come, whether they like what we do or not. Citizen participation is great. So with that, a last motion and we'll be done.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Without objection, we will stand adjourned. There is no objection, so we are adjourned unanimously.